We'll call the September County Commission into order at this time. I do have a couple of comments of decorum before we get started. Tonight, after the prayer, I'm gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And if I could, I'd like for you to think about this. Back in 1954, Congress was asked to add two words to our Pledge of Allegiance. Those two words are "under God." Of course, as children, we were all -- they would break up the pledge so we could learn it as children and pause with different words. But when we get to the part where it says "one nation," we don't -- there's no comma in the Pledge of Allegiance when Congress passed that. It's "one nation under God" is the proper way to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And also, you'll find before you is the salute, and it'll be up here on the screen. I'd like for us to say the salute to the state flag of Tennessee, which we've honored for hundreds of years. So I would say after about two times of saying this, you'll memorize it. So if you would, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Turner, if you would, Chairman Turner, if you would, please come and lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, it is good to be here tonight, and we are thankful for the privilege to gather as a body, to be able to represent our constituents. I ask tonight that you be with those who are here serving tonight, that you be with our mayor, as he begins his term as our county executive, that you give him wisdom and guidance and patience, the right knowledge to be able to make decisions that impact our community. And I ask the same for our commission, Lord, that we work together, that we honor you with the right attitude and our spirit, that even in disagreement, that we come together and we unite to do the best thing that we can to represent those in Rutherford County who have elected us. And I ask that you be with those individuals who are in the audience and watching at home tonight. May we give you glory for allowing us to be born in the greatest country in the world. We give you praise, and we give you thanks. We ask all these blessings in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Three white stars on a field of blue, God keep them strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee. Madam Clerk, a roll call.
Commissioner Gammon.
Here.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Rather.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Kuch.
President.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Gammon.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
President.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Irvin.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serrino.
Here.
We have a quorum, 21 present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next on the agenda is a reading and approval of the minutes. Commissioner Phillips.
Mayor Katrin, I've reviewed those minutes. I find them in order, move that we dispense with the reading and that they be adopted.
Have a motion and a second. Second by Commissioner Chantel and Commissioner Kuch. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Public comments tonight? Seeing none. We'll get into elections and confirmation. Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item of business under elections is to elect notaries. You'll find a list on your iPads, and I would make a motion for their approval.
Have a motion and a second. Commissioner Turner is on second. Any questions? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number two. The floor is now open for chaplain of the commission. Got a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner McAdoo, second by Commissioner Phillips for Mr. Brad Turner to be our commission chaplain. Any other nominations? Full move. All in favor of electing Commissioner Turner as our chaplain, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next, we have -- I'll take nominations on Chairman Pro-Tim.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Commissioner Jeff Phillips.
Had a motion by Commissioner Gurley. Commissioner Dodd on the second for Jeff Phillips nomination. Commissioner Cook, you're recognized.
Thank you. I move that we elect Mr. Phillips by acclamation.
Motion and a second be elected by acclamation. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Congratulations.
Next, we need to fill two vacancies on the Codes Enforcement Adjust and Appeals Board. Steering recommends Kay Jernigan and Angela Ford, and Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for their approval.
Have a motion and a second by Commissioner Piercy. Commissioner Harris.
Commissioner. This thing was handled wrong. We got an email today. What I want to do is, I never got a list of qualifications, and I never got a list of unqualified applicants. So I'd like a motion to table this until the next steering meeting to reconvene.
Commissioner Kuch.
Chairman, if you don't mind, I would like to make--
Hang on just a second, I've got a motion. Is there a second? And a second on the motion. Commissioner Kuch.
I was gonna make a motion to suspend the rules and have Tanya Bell perhaps come up and give us an explanation.
Motion to suspend the rules. Remember, we have a motion on the table, but this is regarding that motion. The motion is to suspend the rules, and we had a second to allow Ms. Bell to come forward. And a second by Commissioner Turner. You're recognized, Ms. Bell.
Good evening, Commissioners. I was at the Steering Committee on Monday night when the applications were considered for the Board of Construction Appeals. I failed to speak up and disclose the qualifications for that members because I assumed that the Steering Committee already knew them, but I understand that they didn't. So I did send out an email stating what those minimum qualifications were so that you guys couldn't consider it.
Quick question for Ms. Bell.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, Commissioner Phillips, I'm talking to the attorney.
Tanya, your letter that I'm looking at states that there are some specific qualifications that an applicant needs to have. I understand that Jim Everwater, who's currently on that committee, has those qualifications and is the member of that committee that knows codes in and out and can attribute to that committee more and better than anyone. And I'm kinda reading between the lines, but it's your recommendation that Mr. Everwater be appointed, reappointed to that committee. Is that correct?
Yes, here's the thing. We have five members on this committee, and only two of the current members are builders, and one of those are contractors, and one of those are Mr. Everwater. We would love to have all five affiliated with building, but two is better than one, which is better than none. So, yes, he is one of two builders, and he has been a valuable member, not only to us, but also to the applicants and to the other board members.
Purpose of the codes is to make decisions on people who appeals some type of a ruling that's been issued to them. So the familiarization of those codes is essential.
Correct. The job of the appeals board is to decide, make decisions on my interpretation of the code. So familiarity with the code is almost essential.
Other questions? Commissioner Kuch.
Ms. Bell, do you have any appeals on your calendar between now and the next Steering Committee meeting?
We do. We've been holding off scheduling a date until we get the member, the committee sorted.
That being said, let me ask if this is proper protocol. There was a vote at Steering Committee. Mr. Everwater, at first vote, was tied with the individual, and a second vote was taken, and Mr. Everwater lost by a vote, or two votes. That he's the logical choice because of his ability and his background and familiarity with codes, and the fact that he is a, would be a reappointment, and he applied for reappointment. Would it be okay to go ahead tonight by vote to appoint him now instead of waiting till the next Steering Committee, with the fact that you have an appeal coming that you really need him for to sit in on that appeal? That's my question to the chairman and to the board. Can we vote on Mr. Everwater's appointment tonight?
Commissioner, to answer your question, is after consulting with legal, we have a motion that's before us, and we'll have to dispose of that motion. It would have to be withdrawn in order to take up your consideration. And matter of fact, this is day eight for me, so I'm still learning our rules. And the motion to table, based on our rules of 2017, in order to avoid confusion, as it says in item number four of our rules, "No motion to table a resolution motion or other proposed action shall be in order." But right after that, it would have to be a motion to defer. In order to give further consideration to any motion, our motion to defer shall be in order. So the motion before us is out of order. So that takes us back to -- the floor is now open for a motion to defer action to next month, or, back to your question, more importantly, could he be elected from the floor tonight? That is correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner.
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Commissioner Johnson, you're recognized.
Mr. P will be after me, of course, I stood up first. But the cleanest way to do this, in my mind, would be if Mr. Harris withdrew his motion to defer, and Mr. Gammon withdrew his second on this, and then we could proceed on that. Am I in order on that, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. That would be good.
Yeah. Commissioner Harris, are you willing to withdraw your motion? That puts us back to square one.
I withdraw.
Withdraw? You withdraw the second? All right, so now we're back. Going forward, Commissioner P, you're in next, and then I've got Commissioner Phillips.
Well, in the past, we could always nominate another person from the floor.
From the floor, that is correct, and you can.
So, you know, we could nominate Mr. Everwater along with the two that have been nominated. I assume they've been nominated, and vote from there, but, I mean, that's up to the Commissioners. That would be my suggestion on what to do. To me, that's gonna clean it all up right there, and I'll make that motion if somebody wants to second it.
Make the motion to--
Nominate Jim Everwater.
All right. Was there a second on that motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're gonna have to deal with that motion first. Mr. Clerk, read that motion.
Mr. P, it's motion or move to nominate Jim Everwater from the floor of this body.
Okay, and it was seconded. Commissioner Stevens, you're recognized.
Chairman, I think the best way would be to amend the original motion, make him one of the nominees, and then we each vote for two candidates.
So your original motion when you first came up, that is correct?
Amending it to add another nominee.
Nominee.
Commissioner would then vote for two candidates.
You okay with that? You want to withdraw your -- Commissioner P, withdraw your motion. And we'll go with the original motion from Vice Chairman Steering to add Mr. Everwater. Okay? So we have two nominees. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Three? We have three?
Jernigan, Ford.
Jernigan?
Ford.
Okay. Ford and Everwater. Is everybody clear on this? So we have three nominees.
Clerk.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Kuch, you should recognize.
Who, of those three, who has already been appointed by Steering?
Ms. Jernigan.
Ms. Jernigan.
And Ms. Ford, yes.
And Ms. Ford.
They were nominated on Monday night.
Which is the one that we don't deem as qualified?
Ms. Ford. Ms. Jernigan is an existing member of the board.
So if, to be clear, Jernigan and Everwater would be the two most qualified of the three?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other comments? Okay. Thank you for your explanation. We're checking to see if we have any ballots. All right. Mr. Clerk, we have ballots. We just want to try to keep down the confusion on this. So we have paper ballots, so we'll be able to vote that way, because everybody's gonna vote for two out of the three. So, Mr. Clerk, if you would, pass out the ballots, please, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can we just go down the roll and say our two choices?
We can if everybody feels that there won't be--
They're gonna read the ballots anyway.
If we won't be confusion, all right?
Can't do a secret ballot. Like, they're gonna read the ballots anyway, so--
No, we would have to read 'em out. I mean, this is not a secret ballot. We don't do that.
That's how we do this here.
Pardon me?
That's how we do this here. We just say it out loud.
You say it out loud?
Just go down the roll.
Is there a motion to just call it out? Chair'll entertain a motion, call it out. Commissioner Johnson.
Roll call, vote.
Roll call, vote.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for roll call, vote by the clerk. All right, Members, that just means that you're gonna read out two names out of the three. Does everybody understand? Do we have it on the three names? Does everybody have all three of them written down? You know who you're gonna vote for?
Not written down.
All right. We have Jernigan, Ford, and Everwater. Is everybody ready for the vote? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Gammon.
Everwater and Jernigan.
Mr. Piercy.
Jernigan and Ford.
Commissioner Rather.
Everwater and Jernigan.
Commissioner P.
Everwater and Jernigan.
Commissioner Cook.
Everwater and Jernigan.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Everwater and Jernigan.
Commissioner Kuch.
Everwater, Jernigan.
Commissioner Reed.
Jernigan and Everwater.
Commissioner Gurley.
Jernigan and Everwater.
Commissioner Turner.
Jernigan and Everwater.
Commissioner Allen.
Everwater and Jernigan.
Commissioner Stevens.
Jernigan and Everwater.
Commissioner Johnson.
Jernigan and Everwater.
Commissioner Gammon.
Jernigan and Everwater.
Commissioner Harris.
Jernigan and Ford.
Commissioner Dodd.
Jernigan, Everwater.
Commissioner Phillips.
Jernigan, Everwater.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Jernigan and Everwater.
Commissioner Irvin.
Jernigan and Everwater.
Commissioner Gooch.
Mr. Everwater and Mrs. Jernigan.
Commissioner Serrino. The final count is Ford, two, Jernigan, 21, Everwater, 19.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like Mr. Everwater and Ms. Jernigan are the new members. Ms. Ford, thank you so much for putting forth your name and willing to serve our county, and I'm sure there'll be other opportunities for you. Thank you. Vice Chairman Stevens, you're recognized.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Piercy.
Some way in the future that when we take nominations of people filling out applications for these positions, that they can be screened before they waste their time to come to this meeting and be told they're less qualified than the other two applicants?
I think that's well said. Commissioner Piercy, I would direct that to the Steering Committee, and if they so choose to do that, it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Stevens, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We need to fill an alternate vacancy on the Beer Board to fill the unexpired term of Leslie Smith Jr., and Steering recommends Ms. Joanna Medlin. I would make a motion for her approval.
Have a motion and a second by Commissioner Phillips. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is to fill a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals, to fill the unexpired term of Michael Rather. Steering recommends Renee Curtis, and I would make a motion for her approval.
Second.
Motion and a second by Commissioner Rather. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we need to fill a citizen and CPA vacancy on the Audit Committee. For the citizens, Steering recommends Robert Coggan, and for the CPA, Steering recommends Mr. William Dix Jr. And, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for their approval.
Have a motion for both approval and a second by Commissioner Turner. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we need to fill three Commissioner vacancies on the Insurance Committee. Commissioners Rhonda Allen, Allen McAdoo, and Jeff Phillips were the three applicants, and, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for their approval.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Jernigan and Mr. Johnson. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we need to fill a Commissioner vacancy on the Community Care Board. Steering recommends Commissioner Carol Cook, and I would make a motion for her approval.
Motion and a second by Commissioner P. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. We need to announce two Commissioner vacancies on the Audit Committee, a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We need to announce a Commissioner vacancy on the Records Commission. We need to announce two vacancies on the Beer Board, announce appointment of Veronica Buchanan to the Insurance Committee as Citizen-at-Large to fill the unexpired term of Michelle Watson. Do we have to vote on that? Do we have to vote on her for the Insurance Committee as Citizen-at-Large?
I would, yeah.
Yes.
I would make a motion that we appoint Veronica Buchanan to the Insurance Committee as Citizen-at-Large.
Have a motion and a second by Commissioner Allen and others. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The next item is to reaffirm the Ethics Committee. Commissioners Rhonda Allen, Robert P., Brad Turner, Ms. Joyce Ely, and Ted Beatty, and, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for their approval.
I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. And finally, we need to approve our 2018 and 19 Standing Committees. On your iPads, you'll find a list of the recommended ones from Steering, and, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve those committees.
Have a motion to approve the committees as on your iPads, second by Commissioner Phillips and Commissioner Chantel. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I'll entertain a motion to suspend rules. Yeah, that's what I was doing. Make a motion to suspend rules so we can, each committee will, now, we'll take a break. Each committee will go in, select their chairman and vice chairman. So we'll start out-- Well, let's, legal has advised me, because we're on TV, we have a public hearing at 6:30, there's no, we might as well just go ahead and wait till a few more minutes, and then we'll take up our business about selection of our chairman and vice chairman. We've got three more minutes.
Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Rather.
Since we need to fill, since we need to fill a couple of minutes. In 2010, when I applied for the Board of Zoning Appeals, there was another guy running, and a comment was made to me that, oh, that guy runs for everything. Don't worry about him. And I've heard that over the years since then. That guy they were talking about back then ended up on the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I got to know him very well. He ended up being elected to the City School Board. One of the most brilliant people I've ever met, with the integrity and character to go along with it. I say all that to say this, and I talked to Ms. Ford about this earlier. I do know there are those that apply for everything and probably wouldn't be wise to let that go through. But we do have citizens in this community that are very smart, with a lot of character and a lot of integrity, and they apply for everything because they just want to serve somewhere, wherever they can get in. And so I would just encourage, all of us, when we see those folks that are applying for everything, not to put that label on them, that they're, lack of a better term, some nut that just applies for everything. Because I learned a lesson when Mr. Jared Barrett got put on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I got to know him personally. So I have encouraged Ms. Ford to keep applying. And I say all that to say, just don't put that label on those folks, because we're all those folks that have applied and wanted to serve this community. And I applaud the people that keep applying, that want to serve that bad. I applaud them, and that's what this county needs.
That's very well said, Commissioner Rather. That's very well said, Commissioner Rather. I too agree with that, that, you know, when people have a passion to give, you know, just they want to serve, you know, some capacity, and when we have vacancies, that we should allow them to, encourage them to run. Thank you. Okay. It's time for our public hearing tonight. So we have before us the Plan Unit Development, the PUD, Amendment Request. Mr. Demasi.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you, Mayor Ketrin. The property that we have our public hearing on tonight is by the applicant, Mr. John Harney, for A&R Land Investments. This is part of the Nature Walk subdivision. This property is located between Shores Road and Franklin Highway. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the approved plan development in order to provide a net increase of seven residential lots to the subdivision. The applicant's pattern book has been included with your agenda packets, and for the new Commissioners who may not know where to find all the different documents, if you look under Public Hearings, you'll find the staff report that I'm referencing right now, as well as the pattern book of the development. The conditions approved as part of the original Nature Walk Plan Development application, such as minimum lot size, building materials, house sizes, et cetera, are not changing. The only thing changing about this application is the addition of eight lots. Now, when they add the eight lots, they're losing one from the original development, so that's why there's a net increase of seven. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting for this project, which is required for plan developments, back in July of this year. Some of the items that were discussed regarded questions about the proposed amenity area, some traffic improvements to Franklin Road, timing of the development, and things of that nature. The affected area will access an existing road in the subdivision, Beulah Rose Drive, which is being constructed to county road specifications. Nature Walk and the subdivision directly to the north of that is called Spring House. Both will have access to Shores Road, and with the continuing development of Nature Walk, which we have seen final plats for, there'll be a connection to Franklin Road as well. Since this is a residential development, there's no parking lots or anything required beyond the requirements of two spaces per dwelling unit. There's also no landscaping or buffering requirements as part of this, nor with its qualified performance standards, because this is a residential use. There was little discussion on this application beyond some questions on drainage and future development of the subdivision at the Planning Commission. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is present as well.
Thank you, Mr. Demasi. Members, any comments, questions you have for Mr. Demasi? Seeing none, so we'll now open the public hearing for those, anyone who wants to come forward and speak for or against. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll close that, back into order. Any further questions? Commissioner Kooch.
I would chair a motion to approve this with staff comments.
Have a motion and a second by Commissioner Kooch. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Mr. Demasi. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're back to taking care of our business. We'll start with Finance Committee. Finance Committee, we'll be in recess. Oh. We need to, Finance Committee members will exit into the 205. Vote for your chairman and vice chairman. We'll stand in recess.
And Vice Chairman is Vice Chairman Gurley. They will meet on the 4th Monday at 5:30. Next, we'll do Health and Education. Air excused. Okay, Health and Education. The new Chairman is Chairman Allen and Vice Chairman Phillips. They will meet on the 4th Tuesday at 5:30. Next is Public Works. Okay, the new Chairman of Public Works Committee is Chairman Michael Koosh and Vice Chairman is Steve Piercy. Public Works and Planning will meet on Tuesday, the 1st Monday at 5:30 PM. Not AM, right? Next is Property Management. All right, the new Chairman of Property Management is Chairman McAdoo. Vice Chairman is Commissioner Gooch, and they will meet on the 4th Thursday at 5:30 PM. Okay, next item on the agenda, members, is the Consent Agenda. Your motion. Mr. Phillip, Chairman Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Kethren. Under the resolution to approve Consent Agenda, I had a request, and I agree with that request, to remove Item H1, Resolution to Add Conflict of Interest Statement as Rule X to the Commissioner's Handbook, be removed from the Consent Agenda, and be placed back on the regular agenda. And I so move.
Got a motion and a second. Chairman Allen.
I also, we can vote on that one, but I also plan to remove Item 2, the Resolution for the Per Diem, off the Consent Agenda as well.
Have a motion and a second to remove both items off the Consent Agenda. All in favor on both items, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Mr. Gurley.
Are we discussing H1 or H2?
We'll start with H1.
So we need to, it's Steering, so it should go to Steering.
Chairman Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Kethren. I'd like to make a motion for discussion purposes that we add the Conflict of Interest Statement as Rule 10 to the Commissioner's Handbook, and I make that motion right now for approval.
Got a motion to add Item Number 10 as Rule 10 to the Commissioner's Handbook. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion.
Yes.
Commissioner Gurley.
On H1, which is now taken up separately, I'm against making this rule. I really think if a person has a conflict of interest, we may know what Rule 10 is, but if you just get up and quote Rule 10, the public has no way of knowing real, unless you give up and give a lengthy explanation, which is just as long as reading the statement, then the public has no idea of what Rule 10 in our handbook is. So I really think if a Commissioner has a conflict of interest, that they are required to disclose, they should just state it and be done with it. And then, because of lacking a lengthy explanation of Rule 10, then the general public in our meetings has no idea of what they're doing. So I think it's a mistake to make this Rule 10, and we'll be voting no on it.
Other discussion? Commissioner Rother.
Is it possible if a Commissioner has a conflict of interest, they simply stand up and say, "I have a conflict of interest, I invoke Rule 10," and sit down? That way, everybody knows he has a conflict of interest. They may not know what Rule 10 is, but he has stated he has, he or she has a conflict of interest.
Let me, let me interject here, because I was the one that requested that to go onto the agenda for the Steering Committee and where that came from. In the rules of the Senate, and I'm sorry that I bring that here, but that was one of Rule 13 in the Senate, and they have the same thing in the House of Representatives, that if there is a conflict of interest, in order to save time, that it is posted on the website, which Commissioner Stevens brought up, and that we would post what, all of our rules, matter of fact, we only have nine, this would be added as Rule Number 10, and that in the interest of time, you stand up and declare, "I have a conflict of interest, I declare Rule 10." Sit back down, the public, that way it's displayed on the website, you have that opportunity. If you want to stand up, and this was actually created when I was on the Commission back here in the mid-'90s, we put in, I remember we debated several meetings about what the language would be, and had to get our attorney at that time to develop some piece to stand up. I don't think it's used that often anymore, but when there is a conflict, I think for the record, it has to be declared that you do have a conflict. If your spouse is working for the school board, and let's say that you are voting on the budget, and there's a 3% increase in pay, then that is a conflict of interest. So this was just an easier way to save time, if it's up to discretion of this Commission, whether or not you want to declare it or not.
I would have no problem if part of Rule 10 states, just, if part of Rule 10 just states, as Commissioner Rother indicated, and indicates that Rule 10 is a conflict of interest statement.
Yes, thank you. Other discussion. Commissioner Allen.
I agree with Commissioner Gurley. I am all about transparency in government, and so my concern is that the average citizen is not going to understand what Rule 10 means. And the statement that we read now, it's not that long, and there aren't that many Commissioners who have to read it, there may be five or six or so, but I don't think the trade-off in expediency in a meeting is worth giving up transparency to the electorate. So I think it's imperative that each one read the full statement in its entirety, and generally speaking, the only time we do this is when we vote on budget. So it's not like you're eating up a lot of time, meeting after meeting after meeting, but I think it's important for the citizens to know. So I feel strongly about this, that we not just say Conflict of Interest, Rule 10, but that you read the card, because in the statement, I think it sort of redeems your vote, because it says, "You're voting by your conscience." And so I think it's a good statement, I think it's a better statement than just saying Conflict of Interest, Rule 10. I think the citizens are served better, and I think you're represented better as Commissioners for having read it.
Other discussion? Is there a call for the question? Question's been called. And a second. Commissioner Phillips. Pertaining to the motion.
Mayor Kethren, I would request that we have an electronic vote instead of, call electronic vote.
All right, members, we're on the board.
Mr. Chairman, can we please read back what we're going to be voting on to make sure that we understand what we're voting on?
Mr. Clerk, would you read the motion?
The motion is to...
Mike.
Excuse me. In this case, the motion is to, to make this item Rule 10 of the rules of the Commission, and I think that Commissioner Turner has called for the question, is that right?
Everybody understand the motion? Okay, we're on the board. Mr. Clerk, record a vote.
Mr. Attorney?
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
14 yes, 7 no. Motion passes.
Next item is the, Item Number 2.
Mr. Chairman, to prompt some discussion around this, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with approving a resolution for a one-time exemption on the travel per
Is there a second? Got a motion and a second. Does everybody understood, they have a copy of the resolution? This is a one-time, one-time motion, I guess, to, from our existing travel policy. The travel policy is that we do not pay per diem unless you spend the night. This is, this coming Saturday, the majority of the Commission, our city mayors, city managers, and et cetera, are taking a day trip to Sevier County Solid Waste Authority to look at their composting facility. This is a one-time opportunity to pay for the per diem. It would be limited to $28 per day, I believe, per member. That would pick up your breakfast, and we have reservations for lunch right after that. After we tour the facility, we'll get back, bustle carriers over into Pigeon Forge for lunch, we'll head back, we'll be back here by 4:30. I'm not sure that we've ever done this before, so this is why it's only a one-time request to defer away from the current per diem policy. Chairman Allen, you recognize?
The reason that I asked to have this removed is because, again, I think this is worthy of discussion. Rutherford County, by reputation, Rutherford County Government has been extremely frugal, and we win awards for being frugal and being very fiscally conservative. To my knowledge, no one who signed up for this trip did so with the expectation that there would be any payment for that day. And conversely, if you would have asked me to chip in $50 or $100 to buy my ticket on the bus, I would have been willing to do that. And I think the other folks in Smyrna Municipality that I spoke with, they felt the same way about it, and so it made me feel like I wasn't the only one who had this line of thinking. So I understand the difficulty in trying to feed 43 people. I think there's probably a more efficient way to do it with boxed lunches, or something more affordable than a stop at a steakhouse. So that was my reason for wanting to remove it, just for discussion.
Well, let me just say, as I said in Steering the other night, you say steakhouse, it's Longhorn, so I'm not sure you're going to be able to get the cowboy cut in Longhorn for $28 and by subtracting your breakfast out of that. But since we're inviting the other mayors, this is the first time in my, that I know of, and nobody else has told me any different, that this is the first time it's ever happened. So that's why we were asking for the one-time exclusion from our current policy to pay for that, since we're inviting the other mayors, because this solid waste issue, ladies and gentlemen, this is, this is an issue that faces us all. It faces the whole county, all the citizens, and I think it shows this trip, by everybody willing to go, and shows the unity of all the governmental bodies, that this is an issue that's looming out there six years from now. And I thought it would only be appropriate, we, we're in pretty good shape from a fiscal standpoint, and I'm fiscally conservative, but to, because we are employees, we fall under that same category. I called the Comptroller's Office to make sure, they said that fortunately, we were having a Commission meeting tonight, we can ask for the one-time exclusion, and they signed off on it. Want to talk to the Comptroller, or Assistant Comptroller, Jason Mumpower, and, but it's up to this body.
Other discussion. Commissioner P.
We don't know what to say other than, I personally plan on buying my own meal, but I understand we've invited these other public servants, and I don't have a problem for us paying for the mayors that you've invited to go on this trip. And it's, you know, something that we all need to do, I think all of us recognize that. You know, personally, if there's any way I can pay for my own, I'm planning on doing that. I don't know how to vote on this to give them their money and not, not have y'all take mine, but, so I'm a little confused on what attorney can straighten this out.
I'm just going to put it on my credit card for Chick-fil-A in the morning for your biscuit, and when we get up there, and then you can just reimburse me. Is that all right? Chairman Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Kethren. Is it possible, and I don't know if Commissioner P was getting at this too, is there a way to exclude the Commission but use the per diem for the elected officials that are going to be traveling on this trip?
Yeah, the Comptroller said it was permissible to do that. Lisa, is that correct? Ms. Nolan, you recognize?
The problem is not with the other ones outside Rutherford County, the problem is with employees, that you can pay for the other elected officials, that's not a problem. It would, the ones that fall under our policy is all of you sitting there, plus those of us that receive a paycheck from Rutherford County. That's who the policy covers.
And that's a little bit of what we talked about on Steering, that was part of the confusion, I think, so that helps clear some, because I...
So can we still exclude Commissioners?
Yeah, that's what I was, that was, can we still exclude Commissioners, though, but cover the employees that are going, Ms. Taylor, or Vicki, or anyone else, or do we have to be included in that?
This is your exemption, so it's however you decide to do it.
Part of the extension of that, Mayor Kethren, was I actually had a few people call me about that and say, one person was kind of joking, saying, you know, "I don't, I don't want you guys to start doing, having these same incidents that the states do about who's using per diem and who's, who wasn't." And so I actually voted to bring this forward from Steering, but like Commissioner Allen, after having some conversations with some of the constituents, I don't think I'm going to vote for it unless we can exclude the Commissioners and allow employees to be covered, but I would add to that, and guests to be covered, but have the 21, or 18 Commissioners, 19 Commissioners that are going, be, actually be excluded from that, because like Commissioner P said, I was going to go, but I was going to spend my own money on that, so I'd like to make a motion that the... Yeah, I'd like to offer an amendment that the Commissioners be excluded from that, but that we cover the elected officials, or, I'm sorry, the employees and the individuals that we've invited as guests.
Got a motion and a second by Chairman P. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Commissioner Cook, can you, when we have lunch, can you stick these sticky notes on the ones that I'm supposed to pay for? Tell the waitress, anybody's got a sticky note, we'll pay for it, right? Okay, so we, we're back to the motion, that was, we voted on the amendment to the motion, now we're back to the motion. Any further discussion on the motion as amended? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next, we have unfinished business. Any unfinished business? Seeing none. We'll move to Item Number 6 on your agenda, members. Item Number 6. Chairman Turner, you recognize?
Thank you, Mayor Kethren. So Commissioners, Item 6 on your agenda is discussion around Deputy to the Mayor. So Steering met on Monday night, and Mayor Kethren made a recommendation and a nomination for Mr. Steve Sandlin to be considered by the full Commission as Deputy to the Mayor. He did present a letter to us that was given to each one of the Commissioners on Steering. I'm sure there's copies that Mayor Kethren can send out, if you'd like to see the copy of that, it was just a very basic recommendation on the name and who he was going to move forward with. Steering moved that forward to the Commission. If you remember, a few months ago, we voted on changing the engagement of the Commission a little bit in that process, so Mayor Kethren was trying to follow that process and brought it before Steering, and now that is before you as the body of county Commissioners. And at this point, I think it's kind of wide open whether there's a motion there and then discussion, it's, I'll defer to the body of the Commission.
Commissioner Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just spit it out. Today at 12:15, I got an email from Human Resources that included 15 pages... that included 15 pages, six of which were the application slash resume. Two pages were the resolution, and approximately seven pages were the classification and job duties of this deputy to the mayor. You know, if you're like me, I have a, I have a real job during the day and really didn't get a chance to look at this. I looked at it over the phone, but it's hard to read 15 pages of small type, particularly the application on a phone. So that left about an hour prior to this meeting to look at 15 pages. And one thing I want you to really look at in the job classification are the essential functions of this job, as well as the minimum qualifications. And I guess, to do due diligence, both to Mr. Sandlin and to this body, the fact that, I don't think we really had enough time to review these 15 pages, the fact that we just had a few hours prior to this meeting to look at them, I'm going to make a motion, we wait till next full commission to have this process with Mr. Sandlin in the interview process. So that is my motion to delay and give this body a chance to review these 15 pages. I know that about two-thirds of this body know Mr. Sandlin and have served with him in some capacity, but there's probably seven newer folks that perhaps wouldn't know him if they bumped into him. So to be fair for all, including the mayor who has selected him, I think it's, we all need to do our due diligence and read these 15 pages thoroughly, not just something we get the afternoon of and expect us to, to be up to speed. So I'm going to make a motion, we delay until next full commission.
I have a motion. Is there a second? And a second? Discussion? Commissioner Pete? Chairman Pete?
When we originally decided to do a deputy to the mayor, I voted against it. And also voted to allow the commission to have review of whoever was appointed, and that was also turned down. However, the last meeting that we had, you know, that changed. So we do have a review. But the thing I want to point out here is, I happen to be one of the people that have served and have known Steve Sandlin for 20 years. You know, I think he was a good choice, myself. And I understand some of you have questions about what's going on there, but what I wanted to point out was, we told the mayor, and we said, he could make this choice, and then we could say yes or no, and send it back to him, and he could come back with somebody else if we said no. Now, having talked a little bit, you know, he went through a pretty thorough vetting. There were several applicants. I'm not going to name any names, I've heard a few of them, but I think there were in excess of six applicants. And Mr. Sandlin was the one that, that won out over those. So I think the mayor's done his due diligence, and it's time we did ours.
Commissioner Gurley.
Yes. I went back and looked at the June resolution, and I find nothing in there to require us to review the applicants and so on. It really, quite straightforward. It says that the mayor will put forth a person, we either vote him up or down. I went back and looked at the 2012. It really had nothing in there, except that if desired, a member of the steering, the chairman of the steering committee could serve on the, on the interview committee or whatever. I think there's still a bigger point here, and I brought it up when we voted on this in June. I'm going to bring it up again. I've asked our county attorney to take notes on this. I think it gets to be a matter of separation of powers. We're the legislative body for the county. We're not the executive body for the county. I really believe in separation of powers. And that therefore, really and truly, we shouldn't really be... We're not vote up and down on any department head. If we were going to be voting up and down on somebody, it would be a department head. That's the closest thing you can compare to a cabinet member. This is an executive assistant to the mayor. We should not be voting up or down on it, period, in my opinion. I think we're truly overstepping our authority as a legislative body when we get into this. That's what I have to say.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with Mr. Gurley. We don't need to be micromanaging the mayor's office. The mayor should have the prerogative of having his wingman or somebody that he has confidence in and that he can trust. I don't know, I'm like, Mr. Gurley, are we going to be involved in approving every director or whatever of any of the other departments? Personally, I think we're overstepping our bounds, and I'm going to vote in favor of... He needs somebody that will have his back. Wouldn't you want that?
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me, let me step in here. Mr. Chairman, when I sought this office, I tried to learn as much as what I possibly could. I wasn't here back in the 90s. Our county was not to that point. Our budget was not large enough to warrant this position. But our county has more than tripled since I left here in 1998. And it was the wisdom of the commission back in 2012 that to hire a, not a deputy mayor, but a deputy to the mayor. There's a difference. In my mind, a deputy mayor would have a little bit more strength or, or power as far as signing documents, signing bonds, et cetera, grants, anything else that would come in would basically replace me in my absence compared to a deputy to the mayor who would operate under my direction. I followed, went back, and I actually looked at the tape. I pulled the job description when, after my election, when the citizens elected me to this position in the general election in August last month. I looked at the job description. Under minimum qualifications, it says a bachelor's degree. But then you go halfway through. Now, Mr. Sandlin, this is one of the things I looked at, and as Mr. Johnson, Commissioner Johnson, Chairman Pete spoke about, I interviewed over six people for this position. I had one that has a PhD that is from Murfreesboro, would like to come back here. He has a PhD in political science and political management and working and living in Albuquerque, New Mexico. But I looked at all the variables, and then I looked at where it says what was voted on in 2012 by this body that, and I looked at Mr. Sandlin. Yes, he doesn't have, you see his resume, you've read it. You've served, many of you have served with him. He doesn't have a college degree, okay? However, the language of the resolution passed by this body, and it's been in existence up until this point, it says, "or" the equivalent. It says it... "are any equivalent combination of education, training, knowledge, and experience which provides the requisite knowledge, skills, and abilities of the position." "The position requires a broad base, a broad knowledge base, extensive experience, supervisory skills, demonstrated leadership skills, ability to relate to the people, and a good working knowledge of government operations, and must maintain a primary residence in Rutherford County." Every person I interviewed, I weighed those, those qualifications out. And it was my selection with Mr. Sandlin. I came onto this body with him in 2002. Walked through the front door with him at the same time, and didn't know, did not know the guy. I left in '08, and he continued his service back to this community. I knew that he knew government better than any of the six that I interviewed. He knew the committees. He knows the structure. And I came to the conclusion that he'll work with the commission, he'll have my back, he'll represent the same philosophical opinion that I have, which I'm always listening of what this county commission, I want a team that we're going to take this county to the next level. And I feel like with him behind me and part of my team in my office, as well as making the full 21 commissioners part of the team, we can do great things for this community. With the tremendous growth expected for us, for us going to double in size by 2035, we're supposed to be at 600,000 people, I need this position. I need him working with you and working with me, working with the citizens of this community. That's why I brought him forth tonight. I'm ready to go to work with him and the rest of the team. I ask for your consideration for confirmation of my recommendation.
Commissioner Rother.
I've been kind of confused. I watched, I've said this before, I actually watched the meetings on TV. And I was even confused when it was all discussed on what the commission's role was as far as the mayor's appointment or hiring of a deputy to the mayor. And that was, that was when Mayor Burgess was in the room having that discussion. And I was kind of shocked then, and I'm shocked tonight. If, if this commission is going to decide whether you can move forward, whether the mayor can move forward or the mayor cannot move forward, then we probably don't need to waste the mayor's time interviewing people. We should interview people. Pick two or three and present to him, and let him decide who he wants to hire. If, if we're going to, I guess, go through the applications and the resumes and everything else that the mayor's already gone through. I agree with what, what everybody in here has stood up and said. It's fishing for you. And there is that separation between this body and your office. That is your position. I certainly don't think, I'm concerned about waiting another 30 days because there's a lot of work to be done. And Mr. Sandlin needs to get started pretty quick. I think, Mayor Ketchum, if I remember, if I was watching, I think you were actually already going to work for this county before you were ever elected mayor. And I think a vote against his appointment, we weren't in the interviews, we weren't, you know, we didn't interview all these people. We didn't go through what he went through to get to this decision. And I think a vote, anything contrary to supporting that is a vote of no confidence to our mayor, and I have an issue with that as well. So that's my thoughts.
Commissioner Gurley.
I'd like to call for the question.
I had a motion, and I had a second, so... Before we spend $96,000 in a rubber stamp, at least humor me on carrying out my motion.
We do have a motion on, on the, on the floor.
I think, Mr. Chairman, if I can speak, I try not to speak from the well, but I'd like to, just real quick, because I think there's a lot of good points that were brought up, Commissioner Cushe's. One of the things that I should have thought of, probably quicker than what I did, to be frank, was something you brought. I know Steve Sandlin. I mean, he sat next to me for four years, and I probably incorrectly made the assumption that other people know him the same way I do. And they don't. When I started going down the rows of commissioners, and there was about 50/50 that served with him and 50/50 that didn't. You know, I, to your point, Commissioner Rother, I don't look at it as a vote of no confidence for, for Mayor Ketchum. I look at it as a due diligence process. Is, I want the commissioners to be comfortable with what they're voting on and who they're voting for as far as moving forward with the nomination. I'm happy to support what you said. Just put it off a month if the commission wants that. If they don't, that's okay, too. I know Steve Sandlin, and I know what he's capable of, and I've served with him at a very high level up here. But I didn't realize how many commissioners don't know him. And today was the first chance, I think, they would have gotten the chance to look at it. I didn't get to look at my email until about 1:30 in the afternoon and didn't know that that came across because I was scrolling through my emails and didn't get a chance to review everything. So I completely understand where you're coming from, and I understand where Commissioner Johnson and Rother and Gurley are coming from, too, as well. I want the commission to be able to make the decision from a steering perspective about we moving that forward does not eliminate the need for discussion. It just says, "we're moving this forward to get to the commission body." So that's my two cents. I'm happy to support that because I think he's a good candidate. It's, we're moving that where everybody feels comfortable and good conscience can make a decision in October to support him and move forward and work with, with deputy to the mayor, Steve Sandlin.
I'm going to make one more comment to that, Mr. Chairman. I came and listened to the meeting and this body in June. The, the long discussion that occurred was finally when Mayor Burgess said, what is... Let me make this clear. That the commission does not have, is not going to make this position answer to them. It's either up or down, yes or no. So what you're saying here tonight is that, that if, if you want to try to put it off, then I need somebody working with me now. If we're going to, if we're going to move this county forward, then... And if you say no, go ahead and tell me no tonight, so I can start because I've got things I need to be doing to lead and put things in front of you to help lead this community. I need a no tonight. Otherwise, if I, if you say no, then I've got to start all over again, and I'll have to go through another... It may be December before I can get somebody in this position. So I just ask you to consider that before you take a vote.
My concern is not with your nomination, and I don't fault you at all with putting a name forward because we didn't outline what the process was going to look like. And so that's really my concern, is that as a commission, we've dropped the ball. We were sloppy in how we handled this. The first order of business that should have happened at steering in discussion in regard to the deputy mayor should have been, what does the steering process, or what does the confirmation process need to look like? I had even expressed to the mayor previously, you know, when you give us a deputy mayor, don't just hand us a piece of paper with a name on it. I need some information. When we elect our notaries each month, I have no idea why we do that because it's just simply a list of names. I know nothing about those people. And so the other night at steering, that's what got handed out, was a piece of paper with a name on it. And it wasn't until this afternoon that we got any additional information. Now, when I asked to be reappointed back to the insurance committee, I at least had a single-page application that I had to fill out with two lines on it that told you why I wanted to serve in that role. We didn't even have that. And so that's my issue, is that we didn't determine what level of information we were going to make a decision on. And so that should have been what should have happened with steering, is they should have said, "this is the, this is the process, this is how we're going to do it." And yes, it's an up or down vote, and yes, it's your guy, and I don't disagree with any of that. But the fact that we didn't outline a process of how we were going to get to that point, to that nomination and to that vote, it's a misnomer to call it a confirmation. It's a rubber stamp with no information. If you don't have a process, this is our first time to ever do this. We learned from 2012 until now, maybe some things that we might want to do differently with the deputy mayor, and that was really the reason for the confirmation. That was really a big part of the conversation, was is there a need? Because so many of us in this room, you know, we didn't know how the deputy mayor was being used. We didn't know if he was being utilized properly. We didn't know if that was a good investment of county funds. And so I think adding this level of confirmation was supposed to be a peace of mind, a little bit, to that. To say, okay, we've got somebody strong in this role who can be, you know, a good deputy mayor. And not to say that Jeff Davidson wasn't, he wasn't fantastic. But again, we're learning as we go. So we learned on that first one, and, you know, we need to talk to Sonya and see if there were things we need to tweak with the job description, if there was anything, any edits that needed to be made, now is the time to do that. And we just didn't do it. The last commission voted to confirm. They left this commission the task of deciding what that was going to look like, and we didn't do it. And we didn't do it. And so if we, if we do vote on Mr. Sandlin tonight, my vote will be no, not because Mr. Sandlin's not qualified and not because he's not a good applicant. It'll be because we dropped the ball and we were sloppy and we didn't do our work.
Commissioner Gurley.
Yes, once again, I'd like to, I think the first thing the commission should have determined is whether it had the authority to, to do this or not. I think, like I said, I raised a serious, I think, a serious constitutional issue. And I think that's the first thing the commission should have determined is whether it had the authority to really require confirmation. We can pass resolutions all day long. That doesn't necessarily mean they're lawful resolution.
Commissioner Johnson.
Now, the point of order, has the question been called for?
We have a motion on the table is to defer action. And so we, we can go ahead and, and cough the question on the motion before us that's on the table.
Okay. The question's been called for. Did you get a duly second for the question?
Was there, was there a second on the question?
I have a second.
Okay, we need to, we need to, we need to get a second for the question, call for the question and need to vote on that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Okay.
Well, there is no actual verbiage, but.
Let's go with.
The motion and the second was to delay this until the next full commission meeting.
Mayor Ketrin, I have a question. I don't know if Commissioner Gurley got his answer to the legal about, do we have a legal authority to do that? Do you, can you answer that? I don't want to put you on the spot. I just, I didn't know if he got an answer.
That's fine. But I just asked you to take notes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
He did, that, that is right. He did ask me to take notes. I can, I can offer, I mean, a few, a few comments in light of the last couple of months. And if, if you want me to research it in more detail in light of tonight, I'm happy to do that. I will, I'll, a couple of just general comments about the legislative versus the executive stuff for just a moment. I think the history of the way this position came into place is somewhat unique in that in 2012, the position of deputy to the mayor was something that you created by resolution. So it is distinct, I think, from many of the scenarios that we encounter because those are often elected officials and so forth, similar perhaps to the process we went through with the sheriff a while back or something along those lines. Here, the legislative body passed a resolution that created this position in 2012. You attached a job description and so forth and set it all out. And originally at that time, you made that position, as you well know, subject to the pleasure of the mayor. The mayor picked, the mayor, there was no confirmation process. Bringing that forward, you know, when, in June, when you decided to amend the resolution, I think the legislative body in the, in the first instance would have the authority, at least at first glance, to amend their own resolution. In other words, you created the position in 2012 by resolution. I would think at first glance, you, at least you have the right to amend that resolution to change essentially the job description and process, which I think is what happened in June. I also think Ms. Allen's right, which is to say that when it was changed in June, the resolution that came out of that meeting tells us nothing about the actual process itself. It just says that there would be a confirmation vote. So I think to the extent the legislative body, you all, want something more that describes what exactly you're doing, it's incumbent upon you to create that process, either here or in steering committee, to make clear what that process would be. Now, more directly to the question, there, there is one, and Mr. Gurley made reference to this kind of in passing a minute ago. There is one section in the TCA which is 56106(c) that does suggest that there may be times that the legislative body might pass judgment on an appointment. And that particular portion says, and I'm quoting in part here and paraphrasing in part, but it says, unless otherwise provided by general law or private act, the county mayor shall appoint members of the county boards and commissions and county department heads. And then it says, such appointees shall be subject to confirmation by the county legislative body. And then it talks a little bit about what that would mean. It says they may express their views and fully and freely and shall vote for or against a confirmation. So my point in pointing this out is to say, there is some suggestion in the TCA that there might be circumstances where a county mayor could recommend somebody, such as a department head or a board or a commission, and the legislative body might in fact have a confirmation process for that. So if the question is, is there any basis in law for the possibility that the county legislative body might do a confirmation, I think there is under this statute. So, so I started out saying that I didn't want to say much without researching it, and I don't, I'm not prepared to go beyond that. If the legislative body wants, if you all want more of an in-depth process, if you think there needs to be an interview process or something like that, I'm reserving my opinion on whether or not that might cross a line. Because I, I suppose there's a line somewhere between those two branches that could be crossed and perhaps that's it. I don't know. So that may raise more questions than it answers, but those are my thoughts based on, on what's happened to this point.
Question's been called. So the motion is, let's, let's read that again. Madam Clerk. Mr. Clerk.
The motion and the second was to delay this until the next full commission.
Okay. Everybody understand that? We'll.
Chairman, the, the vote we're taking now is whether to call for the question to vote on that motion. We're not voting on the motion. We're deciding if we're going to vote on it and shut off debate. We're voting on whether to shut off debate and vote on the motion as it is. We're not voting on the actual motion right now.
That's correct. Everybody understand that? Okay. So we're, we're voting to cut off debate. And then we'll be back on the regular motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of calling, cutting off debate on the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're back to the original motion. Now, the motion is to delay to the next county, full county commission meeting. If it passes, it will go to the full county commission and you'll have opportunity to look at your, all the documentation given to you. If not, then we'll come back for another motion to proceed from there. Okay. Roll call. Roll call's been requested. Want to go on the board electronically or just by roll call? Chairman Cook? Our, Commissioner Cook? I'm sorry. Pick up your mic, please.
Roll call on the motion.
Roll call on the motion.
As it's been.
As been presented for the delay until the next full county commission meeting. Okay. All right. Any further discussion on that, on that motion? Yes, sir. Commissioner Piercy.
I was a little concerned the other night. I didn't get to attend the steering meeting, but I did get, but I did get to watch it. And I was a little concerned about Mr. Sandlin not being there for the committee to ask questions and whatnot. And it appears their main concern is they don't know his qualifications. They haven't had time to read the 15-page document that they were emailed today. Mr. Sandlin is in the audience. There is nothing on those papers he can't stand right here and tell us tonight if he, you choose to let him do that. And we could go ahead and vote go or no. You can move on. That's my thoughts on it. I'd love to suspend the rules to let Mr. Sandlin speak if we could and maybe answer a light line of questioning on that.
Well, okay. Thank you, Mr., Commissioner Piercy. The, the question had been called and probably cuts off all debate at that point in time. So we, we need to move forward. If you wanted to vote it down, that's prerogative of this body. And then you can come back and continue. Otherwise, we'll, we'll vote on the motion. Okay? So the motion before us is to delay until the next county commission by roll call vote. And if you vote it down, then, then, or vote it up, whichever way, we'll continue after the vote. Madam, Madam Secretary, if you would, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gammon.
No.
Commissioner Piercy.
No.
Commissioner Rother.
No.
Commissioner P.
No.
Commissioner Cook. Commissioner Jernigan. Commissioner Cush.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
No.
Commissioner Gurley.
No.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
No.
Commissioner Gammon.
No.
Commissioner Harris.
No.
Commissioner Dodd.
No.
Commissioner Phillips. Commissioner McAdoo. Commissioner Irvin.
No.
Commissioner Gooch.
No.
Commissioner Serrano.
Okay, now the floor is now open.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we move forward with approving Mr. Sandlin as deputy to the mayor.
Have a motion and a second. Commissioner Rother on the second discussion. Okay. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Are you requesting a roll call vote? Roll call vote's been requested electronically. All right. Members, the board is open. Commissioner Cook, you're not, is not working for you?
No.
Experiencing some technical.
So we'll indicate that Commissioner Cook voted yes. So anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Eighteen yes. I guess that's nineteen yes, two no. Motion passes.
Motion passes. All right. Next on the agenda, congratulations, Mr. Sandlin. Next on the agenda, we have, L1. General Fund Budget Amendment under Other Business.
Okay, this First Amendment is for $30,000 recognized in revenue and $30,000 for contracts with private agencies for the Correctional Work Center. This is for the Doors or Hope. The second one is for the Department of Health and it is recognizing $7,053 from the prior year from the tobacco cessation and puts it into the current year budget.
Got a motion? Is there a second? Chairman P., second by Chairman Piercy. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Spend any money on that?
Electronic vote on money? Yeah, I should remember that. Okay. Electronic vote. There you go. All right, Commissioner Jernigan, he's voting. Commissioner Cook's not working, but you vote yes?
Yes.
So anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote. Twenty yes, twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
The second resolution is, whereas SunTrust Bank Nashville is the depository bank for the Rutherford County payroll account, and whereas the undersigned is the county mayor for Rutherford County, Tennessee, and whereas SunTrust Bank Nashville is authorized and directed to honor checks, drafts, or other orders for the payment of money drawn on the Rutherford County payroll account, bearing or purporting to bear the facsimile signatures as follows. General Fund, Bill Ketrin, county mayor, Lisa Nolan, finance director. Road and Bridge Fund, Gregory Brooks, road superintendent, Bill Ketrin, county mayor, Lisa Nolan, finance director. General Purpose School Fund, Jim Estes, chairman of the board, Bill Spurlock, director of schools, Lisa Nolan, finance director. Whereas SunTrust Bank Nashville shall be entitled to honor and to charge the account for such checks, drafts, or other orders, regardless of whom or by which means the actual or purported facsimile signature thereon may have been affixed thereto if such signature resembles the facsimile specimen duly certified to or filed with SunTrust Bank Nashville. Now therefore be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to execute documents with SunTrust Bank Nashville, authorizing the facsimile signatures for the Rutherford County payroll account as listed in the foregoing resolution.
Motion for approval, as there's, by Chairman Allen, Chairman Turner on the second, and Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
This third resolution, Rutherford, Franklin Synergy Bank is the depository bank for the Rutherford County trustee account, and whereas the undersigned is the county mayor for Rutherford County, Tennessee, and whereas Franklin Synergy Bank is authorized and directed to honor warrants, drafts, or other orders for the payment of money drawn on the Rutherford County trustee account, bearing or purporting to bear the facsimile signatures as follows. I won't reread those. Those were the same as the other one. Whereas Franklin Synergy Bank shall be entitled to honor and to charge the account for such warrants, drafts, or other orders, regardless of whom or by what means the actual or purported facsimile signature thereon may have been affixed thereto if such signature resembles the facsimile specimen duly certified to or filed with Franklin Synergy Bank. Now therefore be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, that the county mayor or other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to execute documents with Franklin Synergy Bank, authorizing the facsimile signatures for the Rutherford County trustee account as listed in the foregoing
Got a motion by Commissioner Rother, second by Chairman P. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, this fourth one, whereas Regions Bank, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, is a depository bank for the Rutherford County flexible spending account, whereas the undersigned is the county mayor for Rutherford County, Tennessee, and whereas Regions Bank is authorized and directed to honor checks, drafts, or other orders for the payment of money drawn on the Rutherford County flexible spending account, bearing the signatures as follows. Bill Ketrin, county mayor, Lisa Nolan, finance director. Whereas Regions Bank shall be entitled to honor and to charge the account for such checks, drafts, or other orders. checks, drafts, or other orders, regardless of whom or by what means the actual signature thereon may have been affixed thereto, if such signature resembles the specimen duly certified to or filed with Regions Bank. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to execute documents with Regions Bank, authorizing the signatures for the Rutherford County flexible spending account as listed in the foregoing resolution.
Have a motion by Chairman Turner and Commissioner Shinto as the second. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. This next resolution, whereas Rutherford County desires to enter into a service agreement with South Central Tennessee Development District for removal and disposal services for all dead livestock within the county for a term of 12 months commencing on July 1, 2018, at a cost of $36,102.94. Therefore, it be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute a service agreement with South Central Tennessee Development District, a copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for removal and disposal services for all dead livestock within the county for a term of 12 months commencing on July 1, 2018, at a cost of $36,102.94.
Members, this is a fiscal agreement, so we're on the board. Motion to approve. Commissioner, Chairman P. and Commissioner Dodd, and Commissioner Jernigan on the second. We're on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Court of the vote, Mayor.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Okay. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the public official bonds for the following officials be approved effective September 1, 2018. Chairman of Purchasing, $100,000. Circuit Court Clerk, $100,000. County Clerk, $100,000. County Coroner, $2,500. County Mayor, $100,000. Finance Director, $100,000. Register of Deeds, $100,000. Sheriff, $100,000. Trustee, $15,075,185. Highway Commissioners, William Keith Bratcher, $500. Richard Stiegel, $500. David Victory, $500. Markley, $500.
Motion. Have a motion by Commissioner Gurley, second. Second by Commissioner Irvin. We're on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Court of the vote?
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Okay. This last item does not require a vote. It is information provided for you on our last bond issue, the face amount of $40,680,000, interest cost at 3.0535. So, all the rest is for you to review. No vote is required.
Members, can I, you have, before you, I had distributed on your desk, there's a copy of a certificate, and this is just me trying to bring a suggestion to you to see if you like it or not. If you don't, then we'll continue. We do have a chaplain we voted on tonight, but to keep Chairman Turner from praying, which he does an excellent job in praying for us. But it's an opportunity by taking this, and this is a certificate that we used in the Senate, I use it in the House of Representatives as well, where members are able to reach out. We all have churches of different denominations and religions within our districts. Gives you an opportunity to invite a pastor, a head monk, someone in your district, to come and open our session each month with prayer. And we would invite them in. We'll send a letter out to them if, get on the list, if you have one that you want to bring, and then we'll give them a similar certificate. It'll be on nice stock paper, and gives them something to talk about, and they take it back and frame it because they got to pray over the county commission. I think it's just a good idea, suggestion. If you want to do that, we can do that. I think Commissioner Shinto wants to bring his monk, he'd like to be the first one to come, if the commission agrees to do that. But that's up to the body. I'll put it out there for discussion.
I think it's a great idea. I think it shows active involvement from our community. One question I did have, Mayor Kethren, though, if we've got 18 commissioners that want to do that, and we only meet 14 times, how do we, how do we make sure the others are honored too?
Well, just keep rolling for the next four years.
Perfect. I just want to make, that works for me. I think it's a good idea. Appreciate you bringing it before the commission. Do you have a motion around this, or what do we need to do?
You know, the pastor's going to go back and tell his congregation, there are usually voters in your district that, you know, invited him to pray, you know? So, it's a good idea for, you know? It's just good, it's good within the community. Builds relationships and less people come and pray for us, because we need a lot of prayer, you know? Absolutely. Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and implement that and get with IT, and we'll get something drawn up very nice. One more item of business before we adjourn tonight, Saturday. We've got several members that are going. We've got a total of, I think we're up to 43 members that'll be joining us on our trip up to Sevierville. I think the hurricane's been delayed now until about Sunday, so I think we'll be okay to take their trip. One more time, I'll have Vicki send out more information again. Just as a reminder, we're going to be leaving around 7:00 a.m. from the Greenland Drive parking lot, right by the Hall of Fame building, which is next to Murphy's Center. I've talked to Dr. McPhee, and he's going to have security to empty issue, just keep an eye on our vehicles while we're gone. We will leave about 7:00. We'll have Chick-fil-A on our way up there. I think it's going to be a good trip. It should take us, we lose an hour going to Eastern Standard Time. We should get there around 11:30-ish. Barring, there's a lot of things going on in Pigeon Forge. I understand there's a 5K run, there's an antique automobile thing, there's going to be a lot of traffic, plus there's a ballgame, I think, in Knoxville, so hopefully we can scoot through there, get to the landfill. It'll take about an hour. We'll be on the bus. There's a PA system on the bus, because they have a very small venue. We can't get all of us into his building for us, for him to tell us about his process of what they've been doing since 1992, composting. They're the largest composting facility in the country. So, it's going to be an exciting time to look at that. We'll get through with a tour about, probably 12:30, 1:00-ish. We'll head over, grab lunch, one hour for lunch, get back on the bus. We should be back here. We'll gain that hour coming back. Should be back between 4:00 and 4:30. Wear casual clothes, please. Blue jeans, tennis shoes. We'll be, it's not a lot of walking, because the bus will be able to drive down to where they actually bring the garbage in and make the dump. We'll get out and look at that, how the front-end loader puts it into the grinders, and then we'll drive around to the back of the plant, another building, and see how it's actually processed and sifted out, and goes into wind drawing, and how it actually comes out as dirt, at the end with no smell. So, I think it's going to be a great opportunity. This may not be the total end to be all ends of our dilemma, but it's a start, and it shows our community that we're working, trying to find a solution for the problems that we have with our landfill with the limited time left of six, seven, eight years. We really don't know, but when you're looking at building any other type of facility, or even transfer stations or anything else, it's going to take some time. It won't happen overnight. So, we're getting started today, or this weekend, excuse me, and I'm looking forward to it, and I think we'll have a good time. Is there any other business to come before the commission tonight? Chairman P., you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let you know that the Ketchrel Volunteer Fire Department is having a Country Ham breakfast while we're traveling to East Tennessee this Saturday, between 6:00 and 10:00. I'm going to have Country Ham biscuit before I get on the bus.
Well, you may want to take orders, right?
Welcome to come, too.
Take orders. Well, let me, let me also say thank you, and bring your own, or anybody can call in and order for Commissioner P. to bring them a ham biscuit, if they don't like chicken. But let me just say, members of the commission, I'm excited about being your county mayor. You have my total commitment. This is going to be my life to help lead and create this team. We're all going to do it together as a team. I'm looking forward to this. You got me broken in real good tonight with some tough issues. I'm usually not this rusty. I haven't chaired a committee in a few years, but I'll get it down. Please be patient with me, but I'm excited about the opportunity to represent you. Any other business to come before the commission meeting tonight? Chairman Allen, you're recognized.
I'm sorry. I was looking, trying to look this up to make sure I got it right. Smyrna's 12th Annual Depot Days is going to be happening at the end of this month. It's the 28th and 29th. It's down at the old train depot. Usually there's a car show or something going on the Friday night before, and then it's an all-day event during the day on Saturday. So, just make sure that you try to go out there, and there's always wonderful artisan vendors, food vendors, you know, terrific local businesses down there, so, and also wonderful music. It's a big music festival, so if you can, make sure you try to go. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other statements or announcements? Chairman Reed?
Coming from the diamond on the western horizon over in Igable on the 22nd, on Saturday 22nd, is their annual fall festival. So, that's one of the only cities in the state of Tennessee where they close off a main highway and open it up to vendors and everybody taking the opportunity to come out and visit. So, we'd like to have you out at Igable on next Saturday.
So, Mr. Chairman, do they still have the swing and donut contest, that you have to take a bite out of the swing and donut?
You can do whatever you want to that day, when you come down there, just enjoy yourself, Mayor.
Well, if they still do, I'll come out and enter that contest with you.
I'll let them know.
All right. Any other statements and announcements? Seeing none, we stand adjourned.